First minutes. Anyone have any corrections, additions, deletions, et cetera?
I would make the motion to accept the September 1 meeting minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That was unanimous. All right. New business. Case 111-024-ZBA-0901-09-1. Discussion in public hearing on a special exception and/or... No, no. I'm looking at the wrong thing. Looking at the minutes. Case number 107-03A-ZBA-100-609-1. Discussion in public hearing on a use variance. Request from Dr. Dennis C. Hiller to permit him to locate an orthodontic office in off-street parking, 137 Highland Street. 2.26 acre lot in the single-family residential zone. Is the applicant here?
I am here.
What would you have to say for yourself?
I would say that this gentleman right over here is better equipped to speak to them.
Okay. That's fine. We have your name, please?
My name's Jeff Downing. I'm president of CCI. We're a design-build-construction-management firm out of Laconia. If you don't know the company, you certainly may know some of our projects. If you walk down Main Street, Meredith Village Savings Bank, Community Guaranty Savings Bank, Main Street Devil, The Common Man, and quite a bit of stuff in Plymouth. And I'm a lifelong resident of the town. Glad to be here in front of the ZBA. We've been working with Dr. Hiller for the past six months, looking for a site in Plymouth for a freestanding orthodontics office, which is quite a challenge. There's not a lot of inexpensive commercial sites that are out there for the type of building we're looking for. Dr. Hiller currently runs an office in Plymouth. He runs space adjacent to the hospital. And he'd like to construct a new facility here in Plymouth. Services exist and client base in our community. Aside from Plymouth, Dr. Hiller has offices in Littleton, Broadway, Berlin, Laconia, Wolfborough, and St. John's Berry. I think Hiller Orthodontics is a well-established business and would be an asset to our community in general. We're seeking a use variance to construct a professional office building in the single-family residential zone located at 137 Highland Street. It's the site of, 20 years ago, the former Lionel's Market. And I don't think it's been much since then. Why did we select this site? Frankly, we didn't have any other alternatives available. If we could have found a commercial site that would have fit our qualifications, that was certainly our preference. And we did look pretty hard. It's a challenging site. Small lot. It's quarter of an acre roughly. 90 feet wide by 124 feet deep. Service by town water and sewer. For the most part, I believe, I've got some photos, but the site is cleared. It's partially painted. And has an existing foundation that's in the ground, which has been an improvement from the building that used to be there. It's recently removed. What we are proposing to construct is a 3,600 square foot professional office building, roughly 30 by 60. Some plans here for that on two levels. Level on-grade that'll be the office. And then a basement, which is pretty much just support area and utilities. And 12 parking spaces. We believe that this site is ideal for the project for several reasons. Despite being a single-family zone, Highland Street certainly has many existing commercial uses on it. If you take a ride the length of Highland Street, you can count well over a dozen. Including this site, which was formerly Lionel's Market, and a professional office building that's directly across the street. Professional office use at this location, we believe, will have a limited impact on the neighborhood. This is not a retail operation. It's not a heavy traffic count. The building will look residential in nature. Pretty much colonial. They've submitted some photos from past offices that Dr. Hiller has and has some plans for the one we're proposing. And it will have limited hours of operation. It's an 8 to 5 business. And the way Dr. Hiller and his son Brian work the business is they have these satellite offices in various locations. And they batch their clients and show up there. And so this office will probably be staffed, at the most, one day a week, maybe one day every two weeks. And aside from that, it's pretty much going to be a vacant facility. I believe that the positive impact, I think that the building that's going to be proposed will be looking residential in nature. Colonial will fit into the neighborhood. And it'll certainly be an improvement for what we've all been looking at for the last 15 years on that particular site. And Dr. Hiller wants to be a good neighbor. He's willing to work with the ZBA, the planning board, and the community to have a positive impact with this project. He's willing to... He's already proposed a colonial building. His landscape been shown on the plan to try to screen the neighbors as much as possible. And we're going to use limited site fighting with the dark-skylighting scheme in mind. And the parking lot have little impact on the neighborhood. We're here tonight not only to present the conceptual plan, but also to listen and see what the community and the neighbors and the ZBA have to say, how we can make this a better project. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to questions from the board. Is that a bigger version of the one that was submitted with the application?
The site plan is the same size. We've developed in the time since we've submitted an application of the whole plan. And I've also got photographs of the same stuff that we've submitted to the board that I turned around for the public to take a look at.
Sure, that'd be great.
That'd be great.
Mr. Chairman, I took a spin down Highland this week and used one of the property maps and marked off what's commercial now. I can pass them around to the board members.
Also, I have photographs of the site and the surrounding buildings. If that'd be helpful, everybody, I think, for all familiar with the President Smith folks.
Everyone's very quiet tonight.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board about it?
I'd like to look at this.
Okay.
Just to clarify, there's about four zones that cross Highland Street. It goes ICD, VA Zone, Civic Institutional, and also Single Family. So this was all of the ones within a reasonable... I think I stopped at the Bridge House area and brought it all the way up to the... That's the property right there.
Is there currently a mobile home on that site? No, 38, no?
38, yeah.
Everything is removed.
But there was a mobile home.
It's further than the hospital. It's further than Broadway here.
This year?
That was taken down at the same time that the main building was.
That was this year?
That was this year, yes. The mobile home and the old store were both removed at the same time.
The mobile home must have been right behind. I mean, you really couldn't even tell if it was there.
That mobile home would have been... It would have been...
Yes.
Not acceptable for the current zoning. It had been taken out.
Bevan Skelton. If it's directly across the street, Old Ward Bridge. Yeah, that continues on to the next... It splits.
Is Bevan 74 here?
The mobile homes are not accepted.
Or is it north-east corner of Old Ward Bridge and...
Oh, it's not direct...
Probably was grandfathered there. Been there for years.
Yeah, what is that?
Oh, that's LAW.
You couldn't bring one in now.
Does that one, does that show up on another one here, too?
Oh, that one, there's a... Oops.
I'm sorry.
What are we looking at? Are we looking at the map that Brian did?
Other than part of that.
That one would be a commercial, too, wouldn't it?
Right, that one is that one.
So this would be pink? If we were following our...
Right.
Pink. All right. But otherwise, we don't have any others, right? Nearby, right? Except that one.
Which one's this?
This is Bevan.
Okay. That's a doctor's office, right?
Isn't that...
It's CPA.
I don't believe so. He retired, didn't he?
Dr. Scales is there now.
Yes, he does.
And then that's... Okay. Sorry to take so long.
Tape's expensive. I couldn't really...
Do you want to look at this? Drive down here every day. You want to look at it? That's the site, is it?
I think that is a commercial.
Yes, you know, that red carpet. That goes down to the high school there. That's where the wood is. This building is...
What's going on with this one? Somebody living?
Yes.
And is there a residence here?
Yes. And it's on Smith Street.
Oh, that's the next one?
Yes. And she's here tonight. She just left a letter from...
And this is... Who is this?
That's the lot looking across the street.
Okay. Brian, I have a question. They had a mobile home on this lot right up until recently.
Yes.
Could they put one back in there now?
No.
No?
It was abandoned for a while. And they're not allowed in the single-family zone since '84.
So nobody lived in it? They couldn't put another one back in there?
Not with an abandoned use, no. It was a non-conforming, pre-existing, non-conforming to that point.
Could they rebuild a structure on the existing footprint of the old store?
It's kind of...
Without having to have a variance or...
Well, you know, respecting setbacks and things of that nature. For the basement or foundation structure that there, it's very small, isn't it? It's more like a half or a quarter basement. It is.
The foundation still there?
Yes, it's just covered with lube. But it's not, you know, it's not much bigger than this table squared. It was more of a mechanical room where they brought the sewer and the water in.
I mean, according to the note from Miriam, the mobile home last occupied 13 years ago.
Yes.
Long time abandoned.
And it was still there this year.
Not in any kind of shape, but it was there.
Brian, have you got the variance? I mean, the ordinances?
Yes. You can't go by the...
Just a question on the design. I mean, the photographs you supplied...
Table of contents, mine doesn't jive.
Okay.
The photographs you supplied show this is the structure in Laconia?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. That's a two-story building. But you're just going to build sort of a one-story colonial-looking type building?
Yeah, absolutely. It's going to be a wood frame, asphalt shingle roof, one-story. It's got a little entry in the front. This area here, this main level, is going to be pretty much the main office. Windows are going to be divided light, windows, cloudboard siding, cedar trim. Then really develop the design. They spent a lot of money on the final design to get the variance.
And then you said 12 parking spaces?
12 parking spaces. I don't think we asked for, we need all the setbacks, right? I mean...
Yes.
Yeah, so we tried to stay within the setbacks, respect the... Although it's the... We tried to respect all the residential setbacks as if it was a residential structure. So we tried to stay back with the plans.
Any other board questions? Dick, do you have anything?
No.
Mike?
No. Neil?
I just have, for the applicant, what's the average client turnover on a daily basis? How many people do you have coming in and out right now in here?
On the average, in an average workday, which goes from 8 to 4 with an hour off for lunch, we'll see anywhere from 45 to 50 patients.
How many do you have at one time?
How many days? The office is set up for basically four... The auditorium is set up for four patients.
Four?
So why we needed 12 parking spaces is essentially 12 works out fine because there's two doctors, a couple staff, and then we've got the comings and goings, and they overlap. So we wanted, most of the time, we'll have vacant spaces out there. But it's just that when people are leaving, people are coming in at the same time, we want to have enough spaces available.
Now, the parking, is that going to be in the rear?
We tried, it's actually in the front. We tried to put it... We met with Marion and Brian, and they suggested we put it in the rear. But the problem is, when you get a line of travel, the site's only 90 feet wide. And when you get a line of travel and you've got 15 side setbacks, and then you need a 15-foot one-way line of travel, you end up with a building that's only, you know, it's a small building, you know? It wouldn't fit. So we tried to do that. That was a suggestion they made. And we actually tried it, and we couldn't get it. It just doesn't work because the site's so small. And the other option is, we would be encroaching on the neighbors. And we didn't really want to do that either. So we tried to keep as much, you know, non-encroach on the neighbors, keep the green space. And we didn't want to seek more variances than we really had to. Tried to minimize the variance.
Looks like you have a landscape plan with shrubbery.
Yeah.
So that would probably shield the view of the parking lot from the road.
We basically drew in some, you know, shrubbery. But if we make it to the planning board, I mean, again, it was the intent of the doctor to, you know, one, dress up the site, shield the neighbors, and then work with the planning board in town to decide what's going to be best to be putting in there for shrubbery. But, oh yeah, we're willing to landscape the site and shield the neighbors the best we can.
Do you, did you do any... It sounds like you've done some kind of analysis about the number of parking spaces that you need there. What was it that brought you to 12? Is 12 enough? I guess is all my question.
Actually, I mean, if we had our choice, I mean, 14 would be ideal. But again, is, once we do that, we start encroaching on setbacks, and we didn't really want to do that. And based on the doctor's experience running this size office in, you know, several locations, he thought 12 would be adequate.
Is there any other... There isn't any on-street parking in that area?
No.
So this would be it?
There's a sidewalk on the north side of Highland and pretty much a bike lane on the south side. There's a white stripe that gives you three to four feet along there.
But our analysis is essentially, you know, one for each doctor, one for each staff member, which is four. And then we're taking four patients in at a time. But we need the other four because they may need coming in and out. And we didn't want somebody looking for, you know, a parking space. And you're right, there's nothing that's out there. So again, we tried to squeeze it... It's actually ideal, I mean, for us.
Well, I was just thinking, if you had 50 patients and they stayed an average of an hour, you'd have 50 hours of parking time. Divided by eight would be six spaces in use all the time. Assuming that people stay there an hour. I don't know how long they stay, but...
Industry standards, when you go to design an office, the people will tell you to have three parking spaces for every clinic chair that's available. We have four clinic chairs, times three is 12. And I would imagine that what was in their thinking, how they arrived at this recommendation, was patients coming and going, number of staff to treat those patients.
So, and that industry standard would be including staff?
Yes. Yeah, that's total parking spaces per office, per building.
How does this office compare with your existing office next to the hospital? And what issues, if any, have you had with parking up there?
Oh, we have no issues with parking up there whatsoever. There's more than enough parking. I don't know how many parking spaces are available, but there's always empty spaces up there.
What hospital is that?
A bit spars.
But we also split time with another house.
They have an office.
You're keeping an office currently in Plymouth? Is that...
Yes.
At the hospital, or is it that...
There is a Victorian building adjacent to the hospital. We're on the second floor of 9 Hospital Road.
Dr. Livingston's old office.
Oh, yeah, the mansion.
The big old house, yeah.
Harvard House.
Okay. So he's already on Highland Street? And he wants to relocate on Highland Street? Is that it? He's going to relocate on Highland Street?
Yeah, I don't think you could actually call that existing office on Highland Street. But I mean, yeah, see, he's down by the hospital in the Victorian. And he wants to move up this side.
Do you have any questions, Robin? Freeman? Brian, anything else to add?
Not really. This is, you know, there's more than's normally required for office space here as far as parking is concerned. You know, as Jeff mentioned, we knocked a bunch of ideas around and found the one that had the least impact. Built it the best building for the applicant. With the planner's summary, does she normally read this? Or is that something that...
I hope, hopefully, everybody has had a chance to take a look at it. I mean, if there's anything you want to summarize, or...
Well, I think, you know, to hit the high points, retail uses differ from office uses in a number of ways. Most significantly, retail uses are open to the general public, so they typically generate more traffic than office. In addition, retail uses typically have longer hours than office uses. So this can also create negative impacts to abutting uses. Offices typically operate by appointment only and usually only the daylight hours of 9 to 5. And Jeff had mentioned that they would be going from 8 to 5. The CI, as I mentioned before, there's a bunch of zones that cross Highland Street. There's a number of businesses out there. Because of the nature of Highland is like an east-west corridor in Plymouth, not counting Tenny Mountain Highway. It's kind of ripe for this kind of thing as the town grows because we're not generating any more land. But I think... There's one other point I wanted to make, and I forgot what it was. Oh, yeah. There might be some discussion about safety of the schoolchildren since it's adjacent to Old Ward Bridge Road. That intersection is controlled until 8:30 by Plymouth PD and from 2:30 to 4:00, I believe, also by Plymouth PD. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell, other than her recommendations. You know, they've gone to lengths to have it blend in with the surrounding neighborhood physically. And there were really no concerns on our end with this. It's a compatible use to residential. If you drew the line between two properties, residential and office space, you'd have the same effect, basically. And there is that in the zone. And that's pretty much what she did. Other than the fact that she's interested in evaluating the Highland area to see if it would be more appropriate to rezone a section from SFR to CI, which would be Civic Institutional, which it is more towards the hospital end of town.
Yeah.
And that's it.
How far is the CI line from...
Oh, though, here on those maps.
Do we have that?
Right here.
Oh. Civic Institutional comes all the way up from Main Street.
It actually, from Emerson and then up to Hospital Road, I believe.
Where are we again? Right now, this is Reservoir Road right here.
Yeah. Where is it?
This is Smith Street.
When it's clear. This is CI, so... Actually, that map is bad, isn't it?
Is this map no good?
Civic Institutional?
Just looks odd. There's a whole bunch of zones coming in.
This is Civic Institutional.
Pretty much the CI zone kind of incorporates the hospital.
It doesn't show across the street. It shows it going up to Tamara Drive.
You're right.
Both sides of Highland Street are single-family residential. Is that correct?
Yes. Though I'm wondering why the hospital here isn't involved in that. Oh, it is. It actually sweeps around on the back side.
Right here, yeah.
Yes.
Comes right up here.
That's Hospital Road.
And back down again, back down along the Main Street.
So like I said, it encompasses it on this end.
This is all single-family residential. And this is there.
The school owns that yellow building at the bottom of the hill and the rite of way next to it. Actually, it's not a rite of way, it's part of the property. It comes up to Highland. And who knows what they're using. Building tradesmen, it's only taking it apart. But they can certainly put a... Something, Katy is out there in that area.
Yeah, Katy's where the Easter Seals used to be. Now, is that the Katy building or the CI zone?
No, it's in SFR.
It's in the, it's right here. It's...
What's the question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just asking if the, most recently, if the Katy building is in the single-family zone. According to this map, it is. It would be right here, here's Broadway, there's Katy. Now, was there a variance granted for that? Or is that pre-existing?
It's a pre-existing.
That was Pemmy Baker nursing before the...
And Nana, too, as well.
And what else?
Nana, new found area.
No, Pemmy Baker is there.
The town owned that property before that.
That's correct. They did.
Any other questions from the board?
There you go.
You guys all set? Let's just go to the audience. Any questions, comments, concerns? Ma'am?
My name is Nancy Aldrich, and I live at 2 Smith Street. I am the butter, the brown house. Mr. and Mrs. Lyford were not able to be here tonight because he had an appointment at the VA. And he asked me to bring a letter to the board. And would you like me to read it? Or just present it? And you read it? Or how do you want to handle it? He has some really strong concerns, and I have some concerns myself.
If you want to go ahead and read it, that's fine.
This is from the Lyfords. This is from the Lyfords, who live next door at 141 Highland Street. It says, "This is our response to the use variance for meeting on October 6, 2009. The proposed orthodontist's office at 137 Highland Street. We live at 141 Highland Street, and they do not want any business to be located there, retail or non-retail. This is a SRF, SFR, Single Family Residential Zone, and this means no businesses. We do not like this idea at all. There are several reasons to why we do not like this idea. Our house, as well as the other abuttes, will have the risk of being damaged from the blasting that would be needed to build the basement. This area is all ledge, and the vibration would be felt by several blocks. I forgot to mention that Mr. Lyford has lived where he's located now for 30 years. We are also very concerned with the basement sub-pump, as they will need one because of the many springs this area has. It's definitely a wet area. This area listed on the map as hydro soil fills basements very quickly. The sub-pump and the water runoff from the roof will get in our basement. The direction of water flow is in our direction. We already have to check our basement once every day, and this would also put a major burden on our pump. At times in the spring, it has already run non-stop. More electricity usage, life of pump, and the risk of basement flooding is a major concern for us. Another major concern for us would be our water pressure. It will drop, as it did when there was a store there. We are the last ones on this water branch. We do not get water direct from the main, from the water main. The proposed parking lot appears to allow for 12 cars. That's more than was for the previous store. I really have some concerns about 12 parking spaces on that small lot. As he says, this is too many cars for this area. We would not like all the noise and smell from the cars. At least with the previous store, most all the cars were parked close to the road and away from our windows. Most likely, they will have a floodlight for their parking lot. This would shine light in our windows and spoil the night, sky viewing at night. Should they ever be open at night, the car headlights would shine straight in our windows, would their sign be lighted too? Orthodontists would have the need to do x-rays. Are we going to be exposed to x-ray radiation all the time? If they lead line the walls, we have read, we still could be exposed to some safe levels of x-rays. Any unnecessary exposure is unacceptable to us. This could also interfere with a TV dish we are planning to put in to replace the cable TV, as it costs over $60 a month just for the basic service. That's way too much for anyone to pay. The location of the proposed building will block the signal to the dish. We would then have to find a better location if it was one. What pole will they be getting power from? This could be a problem if they also use the pole we are using, as it is already leaning, and adding another line would not help at any. During the winter, where are they going to put the snow? We do not want any on our property, and we don't think our neighbors want any either. This would mean more water runoff into our basement. I don't think they took this into account, as the proposed site is really too small a lot for a business. It was said the office would only be open two times a week. What would stop them from later being open seven days a week? Also, if they only opened two days a week, would be an insurance risk and a risk to adjacent property should they have a fire. It would be too close to surroundings homes. This is a rural area, not a city. What if they decide to have more than one office? What if the business does not sustain itself? What other offices would go in there? If there is a vote, we vote against this proposed office. I will give you a copy of his letter. Concerns I have are also parking. I think 12 spaces is too many, and if you need 12 spaces based on 40 to 50 patients a day, perhaps you should decrease the amount of patients you see. It is a wet area. I know that for a fact. I moved into town four years ago. First thing I did was put a sub-pump in the basement. Snow removal can be an issue, there's not a lot of room there. Blasting, no one addressed the issue whether there would be blasting. I would want at the very least 10-foot privacy hedges. I can look right through to Mr. Lyford's house right now. Yes, there are some commercial buildings nearby, but on a big allot, and parking isn't crammed in so much. And if you've got 12 spaces in the front, those all have to feed into the street. That is a difficult spot at times to get in and out of, and you've got the traffic coming from schools at certain times. I have some concerns, and Mr. Lyford has some concerns. So let me give you his letter.
Thank you. So you're, so you're on Smith, kind of behind this building?
I'm, well, I have two bedrooms that look right out into the parking lot.
Okay.
You're on the corner of Highland and Smith.
Correct.
The Brown House.
The Brown House. My kitchen window looks right on Highland Street. Two bedrooms look right on the next property. And when I moved in, I was told it was single-family residence because it had lost its grandfather clause, and the only thing that would be going in there would be a single-family home. Obviously, that might not be the case. So I bought the house in good faith that I might someday have a neighbor that would be single-family, not 12 parking lots spots.
Just for my own edification, is the Lyfords' home, is that a single family?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments from the audience?
I'm David Kent. I live on Highland Street, have lived there for 37 years. I get water in my basement, too.
Who does? Who does? Yeah.
Let me explain what I think is our point of view, and I think the point of view of a lot of folks who live on Highland Street. What is proposed is in the middle of the single-family zone, if you look at it. We have, with great vigor, opposed any change in our zone. And what's being asked here tonight, if you had to rezone this piece of property for use variance, which is the most strenuous or serious kind of variance to be given. Every piece of property on Highland Street, which is pointed out as a commercial piece of property, is either a pre-existing use, or was something which was grandfathered under the, under the current way things can be grandfathered, except for the nursing business, which the selectmen at the time could grant a special exception with that location, in another prev, in another previous zone.
And they did, yeah.
Not to interrupt, but is that the Pemmy Baker home, Al?
Was. And now it's the Katy building. And I want you to know, the people there will greatly resist any attempt to change the zoning on that street. It's our home, it's our neighborhood, and we want to keep it that way. It is a safety issue as well. I mean, it was talked about, kids can go across the crossing, there's no sign on that side of the street as well. Those are the kinds, I think, of things which, if this ever reached the planning board, could be addressed there. A little bit of history. Across the street from this property is a heel property. A couple of young dentists came to town, and they wanted to have a dental practice here in Plymouth. And people rose up and said, "That's the wrong place to have a dental office. This is the one-family zone that we all live in." And you know what they did? They went out, they bought a building out of the Tenny Mountain Highway, and they've had a successful practice out there ever since. And that's exactly what ought to happen here. There's no reason why this can't be used as residential law. And I think you have to find it. There's no reason it can't be used as a residential law. That eliminates any concept of hardship on this piece of land. It's in the middle of a residential zone. It's suited for residents, it's close to the schools. There's no reason in the world why variance ought to be granted. Consider the impact on the other commercial pieces of property in the town. You allow this to occur, other people are going to come along and say, "Well, we want our piece of Highland Street, too." And you drain other pieces of property and place them on Highland Street when there are vacant properties out there. In fact, the building that it's in has got a vacancy right now. So there's really no reason to go forward with this, with this. Certainly, it's not in the public interest to so grossly violate a zoning ordinance by placing a commercial use in the middle of a single-family zone, when there's no logical reason for that to have to occur. This isn't budding up against the edge of a zone, where it's sort of a creep on the edge of the zone. The civic zone is way downtown, near the hospital, and you've got to go all the way up past to where the homeless shelter is, before you get back into another commercial zone and shop and say, "Hannahfield's, it's out there." So I think it's a bad idea. I think if you examine the criteria that have to be met, there's no way in the world this property can meet the criteria for a use variance. And I just ask you to support the people who live there, and not allow this to occur. Any questions? I'll be glad to answer. They've been there a long time.
I have one. That property has been for sale, I assume, for some period of time, has it not, or?
Yeah.
You know, what's, what's, what's it worth? What's the price?
I don't know. The guy that had it, he painted $49,000 on the front of it.
That's true, I remember that.
I heard he turned that down as well.
How many?
I'd heard that he had turned that price down as well.
Oh, okay. So I don't know. But I think you ask an interesting question, because doesn't it all come down to dollars?
Well, it comes...
Jeff said they looked around for another cheap line, you know, so imagine this is a cheap line.
Well, I suppose compared to Tenny Mountain it is, but I'm just wondering why, I'm curious about how long it's been on the market, and if it's been a long time, nobody's picked it up for a house.
Well, it hasn't been cleared. It was just cleared this summer.
I don't know, did the town take it down?
There's no for-sale sign out there, there's nothing there.
Did the town take it down?
They did it coincident with an order to remove it.
The owner did?
Yes.
Just happened this summer.
Yeah, it hasn't been put on the line.
The roof caved in on the building. It was a nuisance. Does anybody know if it's been on the, on the market for a long time? Do you?
I can tell you this, there's never been a broker sign on it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It's never been listed. It's been written on the building.
Is it listed now with a Realtor, or?
It's not listed now with a Realtor. It's still not listed. I mean, it's been sitting there for 15 years with $49,009 or whatever.
A flat roof.
And to your knowledge, it's never been actively marketed by a broker?
Not to my knowledge. I'm not a...
I understand, I'm not asking...
I have no idea. I don't think it's been ever actively listed, and it wasn't actively listed now. Contacted the owner.
Prior to it being torn down, it was a building that wasn't in good repair.
No, I remember what it looked like.
So...
It's more like a building now than it did in the past.
Sure.
It looks better empty than with the building there, doesn't it?
How long was it a business? It was a business at one point, and when it was Lionel's Market, I was here in the '70s. So how long before that had it been run as a store or a business? I guess I'm wondering what the difference, why you would be upset now to have a business there when it had been a business for many years?
It's been abandoned for...
15 years, right. But prior to that, I've been here since 1972, I'm new. It was a business, and I'm wondering, how long before '72 was it a business? I guess my question is, when it was up and running as a business, as a commercial business, how many years was that?
I don't have an answer to that question, but I can tell you that zoning didn't even occur here until the late '60s.
Okay.
And it was there, you know?
It was a pre-existing, non-conforming use.
Right, yeah. Then when the zoning came in, it was allowed to stay.
If the parking is an issue, I'm thinking, as a former mother of two kids with braces, I'm thinking it's so close to the school, probably kids would be walking from the school right there, such a convenient location. Maybe they don't need 12 spots. Is that something that would happen, Dr. Hillary, you think, that kids would walk to the appointment?
In the locations that we do have close to schools, yes, many of them do, but in all honesty, more and more parents nowadays are afraid to death to let their kids walk. I mean, there are more people driving them to their appointments than they, when they could walk.
I make one final point.
Please.
When you change the use, that goes on forever. They might only own it for a year, they might own it for 100 years, we don't know. They may only use it for one day a week, and their successor may use it for seven days a week. The use has been changed, and once the use has changed, it's, it's out of our hands at that point. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment from the audience, from the public? Any other questions from the board? Brian, anything more to add, or?
I have a question about the blasting. Was that something that had been looked at? How did you even get that far?
We haven't even got that far, you know what I mean? The more I hear...
It's an assumption.
The more I hear about the site, the better for a slide.
Yeah, well, the...
The basement becomes an expensive option.
Bryant called me, what, two weeks ago, concerning, you know, what you could do to develop the basement, so that wasn't in the original plan, I mean, as, as we were discussing.
We just talked about it, and if it's a cost-effective option, I mean, we could run the office probably without the basement, you know, I mean, we don't need it, it's just kind of bonus space, but if it's all ledge, and if there's a water problem there, it's certainly something that we don't want to get into, either due to the neighbors or due to the cost. It just doesn't make sense to do it.
Would that be something that would be taken up at site plan review, too?
They would ask the same question, probably. Chances are, they would, and they'd ask about mitigation. Everything, or many things that were in the Lyford letter, the drainage, water pressure, the use of, you know, where would the pole be? That would be answered at the planning board bubble as well. The recommendation from this board, I believe.
Doctor, can I ask you a question? Snow was a big question with these folks. What would you generally do with snow in a situation like this?
We should have to decide, and when it prohibited, the parking from being available, we'd remove it.
Because there's no place to push.
It's a 15-foot buffer, all the way out of there.
Yeah, so there might be a time when you'd have to get a loader in there to take the snow out, I imagine, unless global warming is as big a deal as some people think. And I suppose if, can I, about that pole, now, you're, you're a contractor, you would address an issue like that if there was a pole that was leaning precariously, I suppose you needed to attach to, what would you do?
Yeah, that's a co-op issue, but I mean, if there's a pole that we got to attach to, and it's not a good pole, it would have to be replaced.
Doctor, do you know anything about x-ray issues as they relate to an operation like yours? Could you address that for us briefly?
If you stood next to one of our x-ray machines, which emit minimal radiation, it would be equal to standing in the sun for an hour, or wearing a radiant wristwatch for three hours. The exposure is very minimal.
And this is your saying, inside, standing next to the machine?
Yes, it is. And there's guidelines, the x-ray machine needs to be enclosed in a certain lead-lined wall.
I guess to more directly address the concern raised here, do you, is there any, do you have any knowledge of whether or not radiation leaks out of, or is somehow, if people are exposed to it outside of the building?
By the time the radiation leaves its emission point to the outside, it's nonexistent. It degrades exponentially. There's, there's no danger. You could be in the... I'd put my grandson in the same room. I just have no qualms about that whatsoever, it is minimal.
And another one was the water pressure, and I'm thinking, you were saying that your neighbors, or your neighbors are saying that they are not directly connected to the main, is that true?
You have to look at his letter, because I can't speak to that issue, other than reading his letter, but he did say when the store was there, they lost water pressure all the time.
We talked to the water and sewer department, it's pretty much a mess up there. They can't tell you where it is or what it is, so I think that's, we're going to have to run back out the road and get a new service in, because there has been some, you know, feeding of different houses off a one-inch line, one, two, three down through it, and there's probably, you know... there's probably, you know, what he's saying, well, dropping water pressure is probably true. I mean, that's something the water department couldn't even answer, so I don't think any of us are going to be able to, other than the fact that it's going to probably have to be a new service to tie back up the road.
Because I didn't live there when the store was there, so it could impact me, and I don't know it yet.
You're going to need good water pressure if you go there, though, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have huge water usage, but in the same token, you know, it should have its own...there's not even a shut-off that we could find or the water department could find up there. So I mean, it's part of the project and the water service. It's going to happen.
I have a question. I don't know who can answer it, but what's the traffic count on Highland Street?
You're right. No one can answer it. I was going to get that information from Plymouth P.D. today because I know that they have that, but I neglected to.
Substantial, let's put it that way.
It is.
Especially at eight-thirty. I can vouch for it at eight in the morning and two-thirty in the afternoon.
I can tell you at seven-ten, looking out my kitchen window, they've backed up down Highland Street. I've got the time pretty well. Yeah, I'm back.
Brian, in the memorandum, planner summary that Miriam put together, she talks about on page two, first paragraph, "In fact, the town planner is interested in evaluating the Highland area to see if it would be more appropriate to rezone a section of Highland Street from single-family to civic-institutional to better reflect current conditions." Do you have a sense as to what section of Highland she's looking at?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's a good point, and I think David Kent made a good point too, and what this board needs to be careful of, even though, you know, a project may have good merit and be a good project, obviously, and Dr. Hiller and Jeff aren't going to put a very nice facility up there, but we can't be rewriting the zoning ordinance with variances. And if the zone should be changed, it should be changed, and these folks shouldn't even have to come before us. So I think that's something that...I tend to agree with what David Kent said, and I do know historically there have been challenges to rulings of the zoning board on Highland Street, and the zoning board has lost.
You folks don't own this property yet, is that true?
We have a signed on the property.
Contingent on...
Contingent on the proof.
Brian, a question for you. On the...one of the sheets you marked up, you show the Caddy Building on Highland, just almost right opposite Broadway, and then just west of that, I guess it is, you got a building marked...was it Building Trades?
Yes, that's blocks and school.
The old Coffin Farm.
Okay.
The big yellow...the yellow one right at the intersection.
And then you have the walkway that goes down to the high school.
Just up a little bit.
And then right after that, there's the old house.
Yeah. What does that use for?
I don't know what they're using it for now. It's in practice.
The plan when they bought it was to build the Penny Baker Academy in there.
Okay.
Okay.
They also bought the fields at the same time, so they created the new soccer field down below.
So the S.A.U. owns that?
Yes.
The S.A.U. owns that. That's correct.
And the next lot over to the east.
And that's single-family residential also, isn't it?
Yes.
Wouldn't they have to come in here too?
That's correct.
They're exempt.
The S.A.U. is exempt?
Yep. Just like Town of Plymouth, P.V., Water and Sewer, the university. They're a quasi-governmental organization.
I don't have any more questions for this.
I have a question. Is it critical to the orthodontics' practice to be near a hospital or near a school? Being near a school...
The hospital is unimportant to us. Being proximal to a school is very good. That's the predominant population with which we deal, and you have a monotraffic flow. You go to a consultant firm and say, "Find me a place," looking for the school first off. Sedentary and Junior High.
So a lot of the traffic that goes to the school might just be going in your parking lot too?
We could only hope.
Any other questions down that end? Do you have to leave anything? All right. Anything else from the audience? All right.
Just one comment.
Please.
I just hope you'll look at the criteria it's supposed to have in the use variance because the fact that it's going to help in business with this is not a criteria for a use variance.
And the fact that it'd be much better than what was there before, which I hear quite often, is not acceptable to me either.
You should also see if it can ever be developed into a residential site because it's set there for fifteen years, and it's a residential lot that's on the market right now, sixty thousand dollars. And there's a lot of house lots available in Plymouth with better locations. Acreage for sixty thousand dollars. There's plenty of extra places for residential stuff, but I can tell you from somebody who's looking to, you know, work with a business in Plymouth, what's available on Tenny Mountain Highway is major lots, big acreage at five, six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. And I think that unless Plymouth makes some lots available, I don't care if it's this lot or somewhere else, you know, we shouldn't be crying about taxes going elsewhere because it's...people like Dr. Hiller are going to go to Holdeness or Ashland or some other place because those lots are there. And I think that's the bigger, you know, whether, you know, it's an issue for all the planning boards and the zoning boards. I respect them as residents, and I hear what David's saying.
I wanted to tell you to be careful what you say about better locations, though, with the neighbors all here.
I mean, eighty percent of Plymouth, you can do anything you want. Commercial activity. Just look at the acreage.
Not hearing any more questions from the board or any more questions, comments from the audience. Let's just sort of bring it back to the board for discussion. How would people like to approach this?
I'd just like to make a point. As far as I can recall, Lionel's Market was there probably at least fifty years and probably in the forties or fifties at least. And I know it was there in the early fifties, and at that time, Highland Street was a state highway, and we didn't have the Tenny Mountain Route 25 bypass, and every tractor trailer that had to get to Portland, Maine, had to go down Highland Street. And it was a very popular store, but as time went by, it became financially unfeasible for that store to continue, and that's what happened to that business. You know, it just wasn't feasible anymore. Highland Street is a town street now. It's not a state highway anymore. So maybe in some respects, the neighborhood has changed. I think it was a commercial...a commercial neighborhood before the development of the Tenny Mountain bypass. And, you know, there were gas stations along there, and there were other commercial facilities, but they're gone.
Any other general comments from anyone?
I have a general question, if anybody knows Bentwood's office. How long has that been there?
Which one?
Bentwood. Bentwood's. The...on the corner of Old Ward and Highland Street. How long has that been there?
Did it predate?
Yeah, it's been over twenty years, I think.
He wasn't there at the time.
That was a residence, wasn't it?
Was it a residence at one time?
Yeah.
Oh, a long time ago. When the zoning ordinance came, that was a pre-existing use.
And I guess the findings that people have would probably be somewhat reflective of the way they're viewing this application, as is usually the case. Miriam, in her memorandum, outlined eleven proposed findings of fact. I mean, just looking at those, this is on page two of her memo. I mean, I think a good number of them are fairly straightforward. Number one, a single-family residence has not existed on this property for a number of years. Do people agree that's a factual statement?
Hey, Dick?
I would suggest that we simply adopt all of those. I think they're all reasonable.
Okay.
And maybe we could read them so people know if we're willing to do that, we should read them.
Yeah, I'll run through them. A single-family residence has not existed on this property for a number of years. Number two, the petitioner is requesting an office use for this location. Number three, in the past, a retail store operated out of this location. Number four, there are other offices located along Highland Street, and a doctor's office and law office is located across the street from this subject property. Number five, offices are not permitted in the single-family residential zone. Number six, Dr. Hiller is requesting a use variance to permit him to operate an orthodontist office and off-road parking at the property. Number seven, he's willing to mitigate any negative impacts his use may have on the abutting properties by constructing the office using a residential colonial style similar to the doctor-law office across the street and similar to the building he operates out of Laconia. Number eight, he's willing to landscape the property to serve as a buffer between his use and the abutting properties. Number nine, professional uses such as the proposed one typically prove to have very low impact on abutting properties. Number ten, the petitioner will still need to go to the planning board for site plan review. And number eleven, during peak traffic and pedestrian hours for the schools, the intersection and crosswalk at Highland Street and Old Ward Bridge Road is under the control of the Plymouth Police Department and the Crossing Guard and Traffic Management. I guess maybe just have some discussion on number nine. Professional uses such as the proposed one typically prove to have very low impact on abutting neighbors, abutting properties. I mean, I think that kind of gets to part of the main point of the discussion of relative to the use variance of, you know, does this have an impact? Does it not have an impact? Is fifty cars a day more than we might want to see in a residential zone?
I would...I'd propose that we delete that.
Okay.
Because I think it's very subjective, and it's not really fair to say that it's, you know, it's probably lower than some uses and higher than others, but I don't think it's fair to say that it has a very low impact on abutting properties. I would just propose that we delete number nine.
I agree.
Is there agreement on deleting number nine then?
Yes.
Okay.
May I...I'd like to amend the third one too, just to clarify that the retail store operated out of the location is a pre-existing, non-conforming use.
You want to maybe add that it closed fourteen years ago?
Well, yeah, we could do that too, sure.
So we'll amend number three as discussed. Any other discussion on these findings or any other additional findings?
I think...I might have another one, but I need to ask you a question first, and I'm sorry I didn't do this before, but do we know whether any use variances have been granted on Highland Street in the single-family zone that relate to any of these commercial uses we've been talking about?
I do not know that. I don't know if Miriam looked at and did not include it or not.
Well, under those circumstances, I guess I wouldn't add anything because I don't know.
Okay.
Should we put in there that two of the abutters were against...
Three, actually. Oh, okay, that's all right.
You could say maybe two abutters and one concerned resident voiced concerns about the issue of the use variance.
I apologize for my geographic lack of knowledge, but how far is your house from this site?
We're way opposite the yellow school building.
Oh, okay.
Any other discussion on the findings with those deletions and modifications as we've discussed? Your motion to accept those findings?
I would...
Yeah, Dick made it. I would second it.
Okay. So that was a motion by Dick Piper and a second by Mike. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, adopted those findings. Let's get into the discussion of the variances, which is the critical component of this. We just kind of maybe run through it as we usually do, sort of true or false. Number one, criteria is granting the variance will not diminish the value of surrounding properties, true or false?
Hey, Dick, are you...are we looking for some discussion about these?
Well, yes, no. Yeah, if anyone has any discussion points on any of these criteria, please speak up.
Well, I've been looking through them, and I tend to agree with Dick in that I don't think it's right for us to be rewriting the zoning ordinance. And if I look at these criteria, and especially I'm looking at 3B, which is...well, three, for those of you who don't have this in front of them, it says denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant upon proof that...so the applicant is in a position of proving three things, the second of which is no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purpose of the zoning ordinance and the restriction on the property. And I would have a very hard time voting that that's true because the general purpose of the zoning ordinance is, of course, to create zones, and the specific restriction on this that we're talking about changing is the zone it's in. And I just...I can't...and Dave's point is well-taken. If this were on the edge of the zone and everything around it was changing, or if it was in a zone that was migrating from one use to another, or if there was some...something else that really made me feel that there was no fair and substantial relationship, but here we've got a property in the essentially, you know, in the middle of the residential zone, and I don't see how I can vote that this 3B is true. And that's the one that bothers me the most because, in truth, I think that this is probably a good place for this use, a good use of that property, but I don't think that it's our place to be really changing the zoning ordinance. So I'm going to vote false on that one.
If I may kind of just add to that, I mean, to some degree, I...you know, I think there's a pretty close relationship and connection between, you know, some of those hardship-type criteria and also criteria number five, the use will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance, which again kind of gets to the issue of, you know, we have established zones. This particular zone is established as a single-family zone.
established zones, this particular zone is established as a single-family zone, and I, you know, I think some of the same arguments you raised there of, you know, if it was on the edge, completely surrounded by other commercial similar types of uses, you know, sort of extending that through a use variance very well might be an appropriate action, but when it's sort of smack dab in the middle.
I will have the same problem with 5.
Yep. I mean, on number one, I'll just, I guess, a comment. Several of the points that were raised in the letter from the Lyffords, you know, I think were valid and important points, and I'm certainly not trying to diminish them, but I think some of those items that they raised would also be applicable to someone building a single-family home there. You know, I think the issue of sort of traffic and impact, which is sort of marginally addressed in the letter, but, you know, again, I think that kind of gets to what is the intent and purpose of a single-family zone, which is to have single-family activity there as opposed to commercial. And I guess, I mean, I'll just make this other observation and then let other people talk. I mean, I think the point that Mike raised is an important one of, you know, through use variances, you basically are kind of rewriting the zoning, at least for that particular piece of property. And in the memo from Miriam, she does talk about, you know, evaluating Highland Street, you know, and I'm not trying to put her on the spot because she's not here, but, you know, to sort of what is, what's going to be the criteria for that evaluation? You know, I mean, I think as was raised here, there's the issue of sort of pre-existing non-conforming that have been there for a long, long time versus more established residential uses, and, you know, how does that mixture all work together? But I think if there was going to be some kind of evaluation of one or more portions of Highland Street, you know, I think maybe sort of taking the macro look, that you'd get through sort of a planning board evaluation and sort of that discussion, both internal amongst the board and bringing in all of the abutters, you know, would be a better forum for this type of request as opposed to a use variance smack dab in the middle of the single-family zone.
Well, and I think from a policy perspective, the idea that the town is thinking of reevaluating this makes me even less, you know, excited about making a change at a time when the town might be suggesting something. I don't think it's up to us to prejudge the town meeting on something like that.
The nature of the CI zone is such that it's more compatible with residential than retail or industrial use. And that, you know, and going in with, you know, the lack of availability of areas and plus Highland is, you know, a corridor. You know, typically in other towns, you would find that chances are, you know, as Neil was saying earlier, that in the past, you know, having been a state highway, people probably shunned residential uses on there just because of traffic count. And now it's suddenly, you know, all residential, but it's the other ones fell away and it was converted to single families or.
Would this use qualify if it were rezoned a civic institution?
Yes. Office is definitely one of the ones in there.
Say again, would this property, what, qualify, you said?
Well, if the zone was changed with this use qualify, I wasn't sure.
Dick, you have any comments or sort of general comments or?
Nope, I think we should go ahead and move ahead with the criteria.
All right. Do people just want to sort of want to run through the criteria? We've had sort of had some general comments on a couple of them. Just run through them, normal procedure?
Yeah.
Again, if anybody has any comments or wants to make any connections between any findings or their position on any of these, please speak up. Number one, granting the variance will not diminish the value of surrounding properties, true or false?
Are we going in any particular order here, Dick?
No, no.
Well, I would, I agree with what you said to the effect that a lot of these things would be, that the neighbors raised would be issues regardless of the use, you know, the water and the blasting and so on. But I feel that this granting the variance would not diminish the value of surrounding properties, so I would vote true on that.
I would agree.
So would I.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, true. True. I think the other thing on that is that I think the planning board through the site plan process could address some of those issues. Number two, so everyone agreed on that, that that is true, will not diminish the value of the surrounding properties. And number two, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, true or false?
I have to say false on that?
Well, I would, I think, as I said before, I think it's a good use of the property, so I think it would be in the public interest. So I would vote that it's not contrary to the public interest, and that one is true despite the zoning ordinance.
Dick? We're not on the voting, so we don't have.
Yeah, yeah, we've got a full board here, so.
We've got to keep quiet.
I appreciate the offer, though. Thank you. Dick, how are you on number two there?
Looking at it from the standpoint of the zoning ordinance itself, I would, I would say that the, it would be contrary to the public interest, and I'd say false.
Neil?
I'd say false.
You were false on that.
I was false.
Yeah, I was, I have to say I'm false on that also in that I think that there is a, again, enough of a connection and a linkage between kind of the public interest and the purpose and the intent, spirit of the ordinance that, like, it's kind of hard to make a distinction there. So that one does fail. Denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant upon proof that. And this gets into the A, B, and C at the top of page three of Miriam's memo. A, zoning restriction is applied to the applicant's property interferes with the applicant's reasonable use of the property considering the unique setting of the property in its environment.
I would say false to that as well.
And this isn't, you know, the one that struck me immediately, but I would say false to that also.
Myself as well.
False.
False, yeah. I think, I mean, I don't see anything unique about here. It's, again, it's smack dab in the middle. B, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purposes of the zoning ordinance and the specific restriction on the property.
False.
False all around, then, this one, or?
Yeah, I explained why I would vote false on that one.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. Number C, the variance would not, would not injure the public or private rights of others.
That's false.
I would say true on that.
Not injure. I, I'm sorry, you're right. It's one of those backwards statements.
Yeah, I'd say true on that. Neil, on?
Yeah, true.
Number four, granting the variance would do substantial, granting the variance would do substantial justice, true or false? I guess my two cents is given sort of the explanation that's in the OEP book on variances and zoning boards, you know, if it fails on other issues, then there really can't be substantial justice by approving it, so I'd have to vote false on that one.
Yeah, false.
False. False. False all around on that one. And five, the use will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance?
False. False.
unanimous on false. Anyone want to make a motion?
Well, I would make a motion based on the vote that we deny the application for variance.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Sorry about that. Thank you. Any other citizen communication?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I'm a citizen, I would like to communicate. It's more of a business question.
Oh, sure.
It's actually the sense of the board concerning footprints and setbacks. Okay, there was a, there's a building permit up in front of me now where the guy, it's over by the old mill, very small properties, you know, hardly any setback at all, probably just six feet maybe, the way the lots were set up.
Foster's Company House.
Yeah, Foster Street, thank you very much. Gentleman has a window he wants to remove. Now, he's proposing building a closet in the window space similar to a bow window.
A bay window. Or maybe they call them.
Either way.
Beats me.
You know, something that sticks out of the side of the house.
That's a bay, sticks out.
So it's already got a bow.
So the window, the window is flat to the.
It's, right now, it's a regular old double-hung window. But he would like to utilize it, open it up floor to ceiling, build it like a doghouse, like an electrical meter box, not touching the ground, adhering to the side of the building.
So what, we have an?
Violating the setback.
So we have an addition that's like three feet by six feet or something?
Probably no more than two feet plus framing deep.
It's a bay window, like I have, Mike, at my house.
Why are we calling it a bay window if it's a closet?
Well, because we're thinking shape.
Oh, okay.
It's got a little rooflet on top, it comes back underneath with knee braces, so it's a, it's a doghouse.
Right.
Could he put a bay window on the house without being in violation?
That's, well, that's, I would say yes.
So if it was a bay window or a closet, it doesn't really matter, does it?
Well, that was the reason to the board. I mean, a window's kind of a no-brainer, but the other is like a chimney or something.
It's just a little addition.
Yeah, basically. But at what point?
But there's no, I think the issue really is, there's no foundation, right?
There is no foundation, will not touch the ground.
So the question really is, I mean, if you were putting a foundation, and this would be an addition, and then you would be.
Correct.
So the issue really is whether we consider an addition without a foundation and an encroch, you know, whether that sort of addition which does not.
Does it extend beyond the eve of the house?
It does, because he's putting out.
I think it's on the gable end, so it might.
So it's a rear setback and a front setback?
Those houses are built in kind of funny manners, but he's doing some other work, which is allowable at this point. But, okay, so say it, it is on the eve, it's just for discussion purposes.
And the eve, and the eve must be in the setback.
Yeah, well, the whole building's in the setback.
Because it's been there a long time.
Right. Except for maybe the chimney in the center, you know? But, so it's a question of encroachment, and since it's not fixed to the ground.
We don't have everything covered that, I think.
Right. So I'm asking the board to give me a sense of what they would view that going forward as.
Is he going to have to apply?
Now, to take it to absurdum, you could build a mushroom, correct?
A balloon.
But that's on the absurd end of it.
I don't get it, a mushroom?
Yeah, you've got a central core, and then you have this thing built out on top of it. So, you know, if it doesn't affect.
So you can't really say that not putting a foundation under it is the criteria?
Correct. Correct.
Does he have to apply?
I have his building permit in front of me, and I was holding off on it until I spoke to you, Jen, it just came in last week.
There's not going to be any window on the, on the outside of this?
No, the window's going away, and it's just going to become like an electrical meter box without the hole for the meter, you know, as far as purposes of.
Do any other houses in the neighborhood have similar?
Occupied, not load-bearing?
Probably not.
So he's not putting a window in, but he's calling it a bay window?
He's taking out, no, no, I was, I was an example of what it would look like if it was less of a cover.
We have a public comment here. If it's a box bay type installation minus the window, that it is not load-bearing, it's not an occupied structure, and does not go to the ground, international building code, you know, doesn't change the structure. What if it was cantilevered out?
Yeah, like a garrison house.
Well, when you cantilever out, you, you're talking, the original description was partially six feet wide and two feet depth, so that's not going to be a physically occupied structure.
No, and it won't even be that wide, Frank, it's only a.
So it's, it's just a box bay, the people, minus the glass, if you were going to put it in a place that gets, grow some flowers or something, you just don't put glass in it, so people wouldn't know what it was. But as far as structurally wise, you don't have those issues of it's not an occupied, physical occupied structure, doesn't have utilities in it, doesn't change the load-bearing structure of the existing building. It's an accessory blister.
An accessory blister. You have to have a new category for that, I guess.
I would say give him his building permit.
Does he need a variance?
No, no, I was just wondering if you folks had any input or, you know, like, oh, knows about it.
The most would be an exception to the setback, but I don't think that's even, I think.
I mean, I think, I think the distinction that Frank raises is a good one in that I've had some experience in the community where I work of someone, you know, creating kind of a small little footprint of a foundation, and then, you know, with laminated wood, you say you can go out.
Yes.
Five feet, six feet, seven feet, eight feet, you know, without having anything underneath it. And all of a sudden, you've got a fairly large area that encroaches into some setbacks and creates a problem. So, yeah, I mean, I think, I think the distinction here is sort of living versus non-living. You know, it's nothing I would lose any sleep over.
Okay. I just figured I'd ask the professionals.
That happens with shoreline plans.
Yes. Do they allow an overhang on shoreline protection?
I've been seeing it.
Yeah. Well, that was the thing, I mean, they, you can increase the volume under the grandfathering of the shoreline protection.
You've got to have the same foundation?
You can put a second floor, as long as you have that second floor. I mean, the foundation. So, you know, and they do talk about decks because they're attached to the ground at the outboard end, but nothing else. Okay, I'll run with that.
I recalled another historical fact. David Kent's house was at one time a commercial facility.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
He should have pointed out that. Have a tavern there again someday.
Anything else, Brian?
No, other than the flyer that you have.
Yeah. If anybody's itching to go to Coldbrook or Albany, beautiful places, but they, North Country Council's having training workshops for town planning officials October 27th from 6:00 to 8:00, or October 29th from 6:00 to 8:00.
Is anybody going to the, the one in Lincoln?
I'm going.
No, I've got conflicts that weekend. Next Saturday.
Will you stop by and say hi, because I work up there, you know?
I'll stop by and say hi.
When is the?
You can be my guest for lunch.
Ooh, that would be nice. I think it's, what's the date of that? It's coming out.
It's the 17th.
Saturday, the 17th. Couple, we from this Saturday.
Homecoming weekend.
So is the planning board going to be working on zoning changes regarding this issue?
Yeah, I believe so. We haven't really, we got the budget season to get through first, and it's coming up on planning.
I think that's a great place for a dentist office.
I do, too. A non-voting voice.
I think the nature of the neighborhood is shifting with the tide back and forth.
Well, in urban environments, mixed uses happen all the time, especially, kind of like what you see downtown with the, you know, living quarters above retail space or office space.
I mean, it was hard saying no to him when diagonally across the street, you've got a CPA, an attorney, and a doctor.
Right. But they're all, they've all been there. But that was in there before.
It wasn't really that hard, though, because they, they lost their grandfather status.
Yes.
And that's, that is zoned.
And they've been turned down before, the restaurant got turned down.
The TV's not on, is it?
We are.
Yes, I think it is.
Oh, we're entertaining.
Any other discussion?
The meeting hasn't been.
Oh. Oh. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I thought it was a great case.